We get started at four thirty-three, and this is the January eighteenth meeting of the Common Council Executive Committee. Let's start with a roll call.
Absolutely. President Abbas is running late. Vice President Martin?
Here.
Alder Carter?
Present.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
Present.
Alder Heck?
Heck.
Alder Lemmer?
Here.
Alder Wehelié?
Yeah.
And Alder Bennett is an excused absence. We have quorum.
Thank you very much, Madeline. Let's see, we need a motion next for the approval of the minutes, or wait, or do we do the text speech first?
Sure, yep. Okay, I'll just read it off here. So, welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your regional email. Members of the committee, if you're able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you're able, please activate your video when you're speaking. In this meeting, panelists have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Panelists also have the ability to add pronouns, have their names if they choose. Please do not alter the current meeting convention, simply a text after your name. Please use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Staff, please use the raise hand feature when you're asked a question. The chair will do their best to call on committee members in order in which hands are raised. Blowing a hand will take you out of queue. We do not have any members of the public registered to speak, so VP Martin, for yours.
Thank you very much, Stephen. Stefan, I'm sorry. So, do we need a motion now for the approval of the minutes from our January fourth meeting? Can I get a motion? Alder Lemmer?
Second.
Moves second. I think Alder Heck, but we've got first, moved by Alder Lemmer, seconded by Alder Heck. Does anybody object to recording a unanimous vote on approval of our January fourth meeting minutes? Seeing no objection, we will record that as a unanimous vote. Next up, we have already established that there is not any public comment at the moment unless somebody jumped in last minute. Doesn't look like it. Okay, so this now would be the time for disclosures and recusals. If any member of the body needs to make any dis- or recusals, now is the time. Do we have anybody? No, it does not look like it. Okay, so let's get into our agenda here. Our first two items are updates. First one is item six-nine-three-four-two, an update from the President's Work Group on Environmental Justice. And the chair, we have the chair, let's see. Any from that particular work group who can give an update today? Alder Foster?
Great, thank you. Yeah, so we've been, maybe, actually, maybe I'll just start by refreshing what our charge was. So, we were charged with providing the council with policy recommendations on how to mitigate the impacts of PFAS and F-35s on existing and future developments, and to create a PFAS outreach strategy and a plan for the city's role in addressing these environmental issues. So, we've met pretty much monthly since we were formed, spent the most of the initial meetings really focused on the question of F-35 mitigation, and particularly around the idea of creating an overlay district that would either restrict or prevent new residential development in the area that was modeled to be over sixty-five DVA from the EIS. We got a lot of feedback from the attorney's office, from zoning, planning staff, and really kind of talked through a number of different potential ways that we could implement such a thing. And after a lot of discussion, the work group decided to not pursue creation of such an overlay district. I think not because the work group didn't think it would be valuable in some ways, but because of a number of sort of unintended or ancillary impacts that we couldn't figure out a way around. So, that's kind of where that one got to. You know, I can go in more details, kind of explain thinking as far as, as I can recount it. We also have Alder Lemmers here, we've got Alder Evers, and Alder Benford are all members as well, so they can kind of chime in. We did say for sure that there's an opportunity, and there should be some commitment from the Common Council, particularly when we have, when we do have more of a role in a project. So, if there's any city funding being requested or invested, we felt like at a minimum, we should be looking for additional soundproofing with any developments in this area. So, that was sort of one recommendation, but certainly, you know, far short of an overlay district. And then we turned our attention to PFAS, starting, I think, at the last two meetings, two or three. So, we've got some really good updates from a number of the agencies that are most sort of closely working on this. Public health being kind of a primary one, water utility being a second, and we've gotten some updates as well from Christie and the mayor's office around some of the cleanup things and what's going on related to the airport, as well as different actions that are happening at the state level and at the federal level. We are really just at that point where we're starting to look at what kind of recommendations we have. But based on that early conversation, there seems to be some agreement around really needing to kind of connect the dots between agencies, that, you know, not a new story, but the sort of silo effect as it relates to PFAS, especially for public information and public engagement is a real barrier. And we've heard some real enthusiasm from a couple of the agencies to actually really, really collaborate and work together moving forward. So, I think there's a real opportunity there that we're going to continue to work on. And then we need to have a sort of a conversation around what's the long-term, you know, kind of where does this live, what's, how do updates come in front of us as a common council? You know, if we don't have a long-term committee that's focused on this, you know, our work is, I think, was meant to be very time-focused and come up with some recommendations. So, I don't think anybody anticipates this work group hanging around forever, being that place. So, that's some work in front of us to come up with a recommendation of what that right connection point is, so that both policymakers as well as members of the public have a good opportunity to continue to stay informed, raise concerns, and make sure that we're kind of doing everything we can as a community to address this. So, I think I'll leave it there. It's kind of the top level. Some are going to invite my colleagues on the work group to chime in with any other key points that they think we should be sharing.
Thank you, Alder Foster, for that update. Do any other of the committee members have anything that they would like to add? Alder Evers?
Thank you, Vice President Martin. To underscore Alder Foster's point about the overlay district, I think the inclination at first was to try to do something to address the justice issues of low-income people living under the noise issues with the F-35s. But there's a, there are real problems, as Alder Foster indicated, in terms of what can be done because of state regulations and limitations and preemptions, but also unintended consequences in terms of the people who currently live there. We have to think about if we were to create this overlay district that would have, would change the zoning in some ways for people who currently live there, that could have an impact in terms of non-conforming use, and it wouldn't necessarily do anything to benefit them, the people who would choose to stay there. It's not likely that folks who currently stay there are going to be moving out en masse. And any policy prescriptions for that area have to be consistent with the needs and interests of those who currently live there. So, that was part of the challenge that we were facing, and reluctantly, we realized that we'd best go slow and look at ways to try to positively engage the private sector, who would be doing any development projects in this area, to do the right thing in terms of mitigating sound impacts. And particularly, when we have a stake in it through any kind of funding source, we would be able to emphasize that to a greater degree. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Evers. Alder Benford?
Thank you, Vice President Martin. I really just wanted to pause to thank President Abbas for bringing us all together, and Alder Foster's leadership, and the city staff, and everybody that was involved in this. And I don't have anything to add to what my colleagues have said, but I just wanted to extend my thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. My thanks too, and I'm sure from others of this body as well. Do any members or other Alders have any questions regarding this update? Alder Heck?
Thank you, Vice President Martin. Perhaps Alder Foster mentioned some of this, but I want to make sure I understand that with regard to the, you know, potential for an overlay in the F-35 zone, I'll call it, will the committee be issuing a report of any kind, or is there maybe some documents that already exist on Legistar where we can catch up with some of the things Alder Evers was referring to, you know, what state regulations or court cases may be having some impact on the decision not to move forward, as well as kind of a very brief list of the unintended consequences, I think, that you referenced?
Yeah, I think that'll be, that'll be a goal. I mean, we've really sort of moved from coming to that conclusion, you know, we took, sort of took a vote on it, it's there, but we kind of moved swiftly into PFAS because we had had that on hold for, you know, three or four months while we were really working through that issue. You know, we have, we have meetings scheduled through April, so I think we've got like, you know, three or four left. You know, we need to have those conversations with staff in particular to see what kind of support we can get, you know, to pull together written recommendations. But I think, at least for me, a goal would be to at least have a summary of, here's what we looked at, here are the conclusions, and provide a written report back. So, yeah, hopefully, we're able to pull that together in kind of short order.
Thank you. And then one question on your second topic. You mentioned agencies and siloed agencies and trying to figure that puzzle out. Does that include agencies beyond city agencies? And because obviously, there are silos in the state and federal levels too, in the military, and, I mean, it's a huge mess of responsibility, obviously. Are you mostly trying to make sure the city, maybe the county, are on track to not, to communicate?
Yeah, no, that was sort of the heart of a big chunk of our discussion at our last meeting. Interesting conversation, probably. I mean, I think it's a little bit of both, but it's sort of primarily focused around our foremost local organizations. So, certainly, you know, public health is a, you know, a shared entity between city and county. Water utility is, you know, it's its own thing, but it's part of the city. You know, we appoint board members there. We also talked about the Seuillage District, again, sort of independent, but also sort of very local, and something that we, you know, should be able to influence quite well. So, those are kind of the, probably the three, you know, best opportunity to not, to not get caught up in what's going on anywhere else. So, I think that's, that's sort of one. And then, number two is, while we, while we don't think, well, I'm not going to, I shouldn't say that, it doesn't seem that the city, it's going to be challenging for the city of Madison to play out like overall coordinator or convenor role, you know, at a really high level, when we're talking about DNR, or Wisconsin DHS, or certainly federal, you know, armed forces, et cetera. But we think that there's still really a need for Madison residents to have better access and a better understanding of where things are at with all of those kind of extraterritorial organizations. So, we didn't kind of, we didn't really get to solutions yet, but I would say there's, there's, while we may not be able to sort of direct what's happening with those agencies, it seems that there's a need to kind of do a better job of summarizing where, what's happening at those different places, and certainly also knowing where, you know, where we need to advocate, and what our avenues are for kind of bringing concerns and bringing information to those, to those state and federal bodies.
Great. Thanks for those, that further information, and thanks to the committee members.
I will say, while we don't have a report put together yet, there are, Madeline's been doing a really great job organizing, or helping us keep organized. And so, each of the agenda does have, we've been putting all of the resources in Legistar, and so there's sort of a running list of documentation, et cetera, and as well as, of course, the recordings of the meetings. And we've been, I think, doing a really good job keeping them tight at like an hour and a half. So, for anybody that is interested in digging in, there is some good additional information, both in Legistar and in the recordings.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have any other question? Oh, President Abbas has returned. I am, if you, you're ready to take over? I'm ready to hand it over.
No, no, Vice President Martin, please.
Not yet?
Yes. Please go ahead. Please continue. I'm still not at my home, so please.
All right, sounds good. So, do we have any more questions regarding this update? Appears we do not. So, we are on to our next item, which is Legistar number six-nine-three-four-eight, An Update from the President's Work Group on Racial Justice, Anti-Racism, and Equality. Do we have someone from that committee who can give us our update on this?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. The President Work Group of Racial Justice, Anti-Racism, and Equity was established and was charged by, to provide policy recommendation on participatory budgeting and creating a framework for all the boards, committees, and commissions, BCC, around anti-racism, equity, and inclusion training. We have met since August, and what we did was we divided the work. We took the first part to focus on participatory budget, and we had many departments input, for example, the Finance Department, DCR, the Community Service, and Economic, Department of Economic Development. What we learned is the, those agencies or department helped us, what is the process in budgeting, also what is the funding allocation in term of the communities of color. And also, the DCR took a little bit of time in, you know, explaining and giving us input on how the RSG analysis is used when it comes to budgeting. When, also, we invited the community members and talked about ways they can engage in the budget process, but also some of their concerns in term of when working with the, with the city. We invited two speakers, one from Durham and one from Seattle, just to get an overview of how the budget, participatory budget works. And we found quite, you know, interesting reports. We are in the process of finalizing the reports, and hopefully, when we get this information, you can, you can find in Legistar. Like Alder Foster said, you know, we, every meeting we had, we, there's reports that's in Legistar for our committee as well. So, if anyone is interested in learning more about the, this group, you can go into Legistar and find out what's going on. The other thing is, we, since we have finalized the participatory budget, we are going into the Equity Board, Commissions, and Committees. We have different topics that we'll be discussing in the future. Our first meeting for this second half of the initiative is tomorrow, I guess, and we'll be talking about recruitment, appointment, and training approach. Second meeting will be outreach and messaging to the communities of color and membership. So, like, like the participatory budget, we hope to have a very conclusive reports, what's working, and how we can be able to engage into the community. So, I would like to invite my colleagues or members in the committee, if they want to add anything that I've missed. So, that's my report.
Thank you, Alder Wehelié. Alder Benford?
Thanks, Vice President Martin. I want to echo what I said earlier. I really deeply appreciate Alder Wehelié's leadership and city staff, and the opportunity to come together with my colleagues on this call, and really appreciate President Abbas creating these work groups, these task force. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alder Benford. Do we have, do we have any other of the work group members who would like to add anything to this report? Doesn't look like I see any hands raised.
Vice President Martin, I just wanted to...
Go, Alder Carter?
Vice President Martin, I just wanted to say that I think that Alder Wehelié has done a fantastic job in her description of what we've been working on. And this is such an important committee, especially in the times that we are living in, and hopefully that we can lay the foundation that we, for committees and council colleagues in the future can adhere to and make it more welcoming for, for not only residents, but the diversity that we cherish so much in the city of Madison. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Carter, for those words. And again, and again, thank you to Alder Wehelié for serving and guiding this work group. It does look like President Abbas is here with his hand raised, so I'm going to turn it over.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much for an opportunity. I also would like to acknowledge the leadership of Alder Foster, and also Alder Wehelié, and also all the fellow Alders who sit on this, both very, very important work groups, and they're committed to the cause and giving their time. I truly know that this year is really hard, and the time commitment on this work is, it's a big, huge, heavy lift. So, I truly appreciate all the Alders, and also the both chair for their dedication and their work. So, thanks.
Oh, thank you. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair. Everything has been said, and I add my, my appreciation for the Alders' leadership. But I also wanted to say, or to share that her leadership has been recognized not only locally here on the Madison City Council, but she has also been invited and accepted the invitation to serve as the director and help me with the, with, with the, is it the League of Cities? Help me, Alder.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. It's a board member at the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. I've been invited to accept a board member at the League of Wisconsin Municipalities.
And I'd like to acknowledge her because they recognize what we've recognized in her leadership, and her commitment to making not only our city, but also making her district and also the league, you know, stand up and be recognized. So, I just wanted to make sure it's hats off to you as well for your leadership.
Thank you, Alder McKinney.
And congratulations for your appointment. It is a great honor. And congratulations for your appointment. It is indeed a great honor and wonderful representation for Madison with that organization.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do we have, yeah, do we have any other comments or questions regarding this update? Don't see any hands raised. And that's the last item on this agenda. Hooray for going through this. We'll get some time to eat before the next meeting. We do have, for our, under our future agenda items, bullet point here, that we will be reviewing the adoption of an updated emergency management plan for the city of Madison, but just file in Legistar, file number 66211. We're not discussing it now, but it will be upcoming. And so, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Alder Lemmer? So, move, and Alder Wehelié?
Second.
Want to be the second? All right. All right. And unless I hear any objections, I will assume unanimous consent for us to adjourn this meeting. And I will see you all at 6:30. Thank you so much.
Thank you.